Hi, everybody. I'm Steve Bosque, the opinion editor for the Sun Sentinel. I want to thank all three of you for joining us this afternoon. With me is my colleague, my deputy opinion editor, Dan Sweeney. And as you might have heard Dan mention, one or more education reporters may join the call to listen. And they may ask questions at the end if we have time. I think you all know this, but it certainly bears repeating. Reporters who cover the school district and who are covering your race have no role and do not participate in any editorial board decisions about who we might recommend in this race. That's the sole purview of the editorial board. We're separate. We function separately, but there are, you know, we greatly appreciate the opportunities to spend quality time with candidates like this one. So we want to take full advantage of it. Simple as that. So.
Speaking of reporters joining, we're just now have a Shira Moulton on the line. So that's a newsroom side reporter. She's free to ask questions as the conversation goes on. And I'm going to admit Scott Travis, who is also from the newsroom side of the paper. And again, Scott's also free to ask questions as we as we go on. But like Steve said, Steve and I run, you know, Steve runs the opinion side. We handle endorsements and they're certainly welcome to ask questions, but they do not participate in the endorsement process. All right, Steve, fire away.
That's okay. Thanks, Dan. Let me just say for the benefit of Scott Travis and for Shira, they may not have heard this, we're going to allow, we're going to allow give or take. We're going to allow about 45 minutes for this conversation. If we get near the end, that is in the last 10 minutes or so. If there's a really important question, either of you as reporters feels we've overlooked and need to be asked, by all means, raise your hand. I've explained to the candidates that reporters don't play any role in the editorial board recommendations, but we certainly value the newsrooms input. And it's highly likely we'll overlook some really important questions. So know that. I'm going to begin by asking a question of Rod Velez. Rod, in your questionnaire to the to the Sun Sentinel, you, one of the things you observed was that you think that there's a greater need for transparency by the new superintendent, Vicky Cartwright. I'd like you to give us an example of what you're referring to there.
I can use the example from the school board meeting a few weeks ago when the community was upset with not being involved in the process of the lateral movements of positions in the school system with her organizational chart. They feel that there was not enough transparency in the decision making. And it was it was pretty short noticed with a lot of the things that were going on with that. There should have been more vetting and involvement with the parents and the community with all of those areas, I believe.
What should what should Cartwright have done differently?
I think one of the reasons why I got involved is for the lack of accountability and transparency in the district. And it's it's being proactive and getting ahead of it and giving it more time. It seems to be a common thing where it's things are are done at the last minute. Decisions are made at the last minute as opposed to a month, two months ahead. And just having more input, it just seems these these decisions are done on the spur of a moment. It's just what it seems from my perspective. And if if there's more time given to vet it, to process it, it'll be more inclusive of the community. And just just to have a voice as a parent myself, I feel it's important to know that I have input in the things that are going on in our district. And I just want to have that open communication with someone that is appointed by the school board members. And that's her that's her role.
Marie Martin, I want to ask you the same question. What is your general level of satisfaction with the kind of transparency we're seeing from Vicky Cartwright?
Well, she's got a she's in a tough spot. She's supposed to promote the image of the district while trying to make some changes that the board wanted her to make. She came she came in at a time when, you know, it didn't give her much time there at the beginning of the year to make some changes. I think some of these changes that had been made were in the works for some time. I agree with Rod when he says that there should have been more input from the community. There should have been some time for the staff to process. However, most of the things that are done in the school district are mostly finalized by the spring. I would say April, May. We've already signed our contracts as teachers. They're already planning the year out for next year in April, May. So she was kind of behind the eight ball. She had to get some things in place to get ready for the preparation for the school year. I know everyone thinks there's months and months there, but there's not. Some like we're all working. I'm off on lunch right now. I'm working this summer. So many of us are working this summer and the next year has really already been prepared. I know that even like some of these new principals that came into these positions at the last minute. I've talked to a couple of them. They can't even change much of the budget because it's already been set in stone for them. So she had a hard position there in that in that area. I like what she did with the South Central North thing. I think that the district's too large. I like seeing it quadrant out like that. I think we needed some oversight into those segments because this, you know, you know, it's said all the time that Broward is the sixth largest school district in the country. And so it's a very, I call it a battleship. I said that at the last forum I was at and to turn a battleship around is a pretty tough thing. So you're going to have to cut it up a little bit, let some other people that have expertise come in and kind of oversee. But I would have liked to see input from the staff and the community.
Mr. Wiggins, so welcome to the conversation, sir. And same question for you. I'd like you to give us an assessment of the level of transparency by Vicky Cartwright. Oh, unmute your mic, please, sir.
Thank you all for having me, and particularly as it relates to that that subject that we're talking about. I actually spoke at the the school board meeting on that day. Then my recommendation for the board at that time was there should have been some some more thought put into it in terms of as has already been said, engage in the community. My recommendation was to table the decision until they can go back and have that some more intricate dialogue and get some feedback from the community. Now, does she have, at the end of the day, the authority to make changes? Absolutely. But I think that even having the authority ought to be tempered with making sure that you do the right thing. And in this particular instance, I don't know that the right thing, I don't believe that the right thing was being done and that that the community should have had some say into it just to let everybody know what was coming down the pike. So that was what all the uproar was about is because people felt left out.
I lost I lost a bit of context with your answer. People felt left out of what decision?
The process, you know, in terms of explaining, this is what we're going, we're going to do. We're in the process of doing as opposed to it just happening on that day, you know, when they came to the board meeting.
Okay, before we go any further, Mr. Wiggins, we've received a detailed questionnaire from both of your opponents, but not from you, sir.
I did not see it requested in your document. I do have it. I can send it to you. I have it now if I can, I can.
Sure. I mean, whatever it's convenient, but the sooner the better. But yes.
I'm going to do that right now.
Let me ask a question that was asked on the questionnaire, but I'm asking you now verbally because I haven't seen the questionnaire. Are you a supporter of the August 23 referendum on the raising and extending the millage?
Yes, I am.
Why?
Our teachers, let me let me do this real quick.
Yes, sir.
You know, our teachers deserve, they deserve better pay. When I, when I look, I come from a background of teachers, my father and three of my sisters. I understand what they go through in the classroom and being on campus. One of the most significant relationships anywhere to be found is the relationship between a teacher and a student. Our teachers deserve to get a higher level of pay for what they do each and every day. There, our teachers see our children more than any other, you know, persons during the course of the day. They're being asked to do some incredible things over and above what they were initially hired to do. So so I think like much any other profession, a professional or professional positions, teachers need to be paid commensurate with what they do.
Okay, Rod Velez, I think you know that we all know Broward County is one of the most diverse places in the United States. Tell me, is the current makeup, how representative is the current makeup of the Broward County School Board of the community it serves?
I can only speak for my district. I have 19 of 20 elementary schools that are Title I. I'm talking K through through five elementary schools. There's one out West, which I believe it's probably Sterling Elementary or it's a school out West that's not. So with that saying that you got to qualify with 40% of free and reduced lunch, that just that just says that the economical differences in our district are to me a little bit different than what the other ones experienced. I think it's important that we know our districts and from where I come from, I come from a diverse background and I think it's important for us to know our constituents, our communities. It's important to have that open communication with them so that way we can we can move forward as a district.
Okay. Marie Martin, as you know, there's recently been the completion of a grand jury report about the Broward County School District, the contents of which have not yet been released. How important and how quickly, how important is it that that grand jury report be released to the public? And how quickly should it be released, in your opinion?
Well, I think there were some processes that had to be looked at for those that felt they needed some more time to be able to read it and possibly try to mitigate some of the things that were spoken in the report before it went out publicly. So I think that's kind of in the works. When do I think it should come out? That's not for me to say. I would say that that's for the process to take care of.
I'm asking partly, of course, because your your mother is currently a member of the Broward School Board. She's not seeking reelection and that's why this seat is open, right? Correct?
Correct. I'm looking to fill her seat.
Right. I mean, I'm asking this question because you're the daughter of a sitting school board member. How concerned are you that your mother is implicated adversely in this grand jury report?
Implicated is a strong word. I know what I've seen, what the press has written as far as saying that there's corruption or incompetence or whatever. I know my mother, she's not corrupt. She's not someone that takes bribes or does anything underhanded. So I take issue with those kind of words when it comes to my mother, of course. You know, those grand juries are, are their accounts of, you know, people are saying things that they've seen. And it's there to protect those people that wanted to share what they've seen. However, I question sometimes some of the the evidences that are putting put in. It's all, it's all like eyewitness stuff. Where are documents to prove that there's corruption and incompetence? These are all just people saying these things at, you know, a grand jury. So I haven't read it. I don't know much about it. But I know as far as my mother's concerned, there's, in my opinion, there's no corruption. There may have been some malfeasance as far as how the superintendent handled the bond and maybe how, and I wrote about that when I said, you know, that the whole bond issue was dogged by by many different issues. I'm not sure that that would go back on the board. I would say that, you know, the staff has some responsibility in that. Ultimately, I guess, as a board as a whole, they wanted to go to the next level after Mr. Runcie was gone. But again, I can't say what timeline it should be. I can only speak on behalf of knowing that my mother that she's not a corrupt individual. That's the farthest thing from what she is.
I just have one brief follow up question for you and then I'll move to the other candidates. But Ms. Martin, if the report hasn't been released yet, how are, how is it you have the opinion that it's based on eyewitness statements and not on documentary?
That's how grand juries, because that's how grand juries are put together. They just, they they have people come in and give testimony. Typically, there's not a lot of documentation to go with it. Typically, it's it's eyewitness accounts. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, Mr. Wiggins, let me ask you, sir, what, how quickly and how how forthrightly should the grand jury report be presented, everybody?
If the report is complete, it should be, it should be submitted immediately because it's going to impact future operation on the board. And I'm believing that there's going to be some changes on the board that people need to, those new members on the board need to get this information as soon as possible so that they can be in a posture of making some sound decisions for moving forward.
Rod Velez, what's your opinion?
So I've been following this for a little while and thanks to Mr. Travis's great reporting. It's brought a lot of stuff to light from my perspective. From what I understand, there are three people that they were in discussion with. And there's only one of them that are that are currently running for the at-large seat that could be implicated. And I think it's important to find out right away if that person should be re-running again or not. It's important to restore the the culture in this district and the integrity of this board. It's really important. That's why I'm running as a parent. And that's why Marie's there and that's why Paul's running because, you know, this is the biggest turnout in years for school board races. I know that it hasn't come out yet because there have been more people that have been implicated. So they have to give time to question those people. If it were, if it were that cut and dry, would have come out last March, I think it was, was when it was originally supposed to come out. And then we didn't have all these delays. So I know they're continually asking the questions. Just like Mr. Wiggins says, as soon as they complete it, if it's done now, it needs to be put out now, or at least the portions of when it pertains to the candidates that are currently running. Because it's wasting a lot of people's time and effort and money at this point. We, it's time for us, we're all running because we feel it's time to clean house and to make improvements.
And how do you? Yes, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I trust the grand jury as far as whatever they decide. If the if the board is not being complicit in whatever recommendations are being made, then board members should should move on. However, I think it should be up to the voter to do that. I think the voters should decide who should say and who should go.
Well, if they're implicated in the grand jury report for doing some wrongful doing, we're all about our integrity. I don't want to be sitting next to someone that doesn't have the integrity or hold themselves accountable for any wrongdoings and malicious wrongs that's been done in our in our district.
I 100% agree. If there's crime committed, then absolutely they need to go.
I hold myself accountable for anything that I've done wrong in my past and I'm here to speak about all of that.
Mr. Velez, a quick follow up question for you, Rod Velez, and correct me if I'm wrong. There are three incumbents on the Broward School Board who might be mentioned and mentioned adversely in this grand jury report who are seeking reelection this fall. Should those board members have a say in whether or when the grand jury report is made public?
Because you have to let the due process, you know, take course, take its course. You know, we can't rush it for that fact, but, you know, from what I understand, some of the people aren't running for reelection because they know that they're being implicated. They've been questioned. If you if you know you're implicated, you've been questioned. You you're going to have retained attorneys, which some of them have, and more than one attorneys they've, you know, retained. So look, when you do something wrong, you know you've done something wrong. It's a matter of, do you hold yourself accountable? You know, do you step down? Do you do you take it like a man or a woman and accept it and move forward?
Okay, Dan Sweeney, you had your hand up, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, not wanting to let one candidate, you know, speak over everybody else. Mr. Velez said earlier that, you know, why he's running and he also said why Ms. Martin's running, why Reverend Wiggins is running is to to clean house, I think he said. Just to be, to be clear and give everybody a fair shot at responding to that, would you say that's why you're running? Do you, for to?
If I may, I'm, I'm, I'm running because I care, you know, and I care because every, every, every facet of my life, you know, school, military, college, and even in my corporate life and now in ministry, someone cared for and looked out for me. So I'm caring because I care about my community. I care about the entire community and particularly our young people in our community. Our most vulnerable, you know, people out there. So I care. And that's why I'm in this race, to make a difference, so that we can put the focus back on our children as opposed to all of this, this other stuff. I'm going to use that term, this other stuff that's going on. So to make change, yes. But because I have a caring heart, because I know what, reaching out and helping others because I witnessed what it has done for me and others in my family over a lifespan.
Well, we'll stipulate that everybody that's running cares in some respect about Broward Schools, right? Said in a very heartfelt manner by you, but.
We care about the kids. We're here because of the kids. I have a kid's first agenda. I mean, if we didn't care about kids, we wouldn't be sitting having this conversation today.
The question, though, is, is do you think, not just your race, but in a larger sense, the school board, that sitting school board members need to go and you need to have a clean slate on the board?
I want the best of the best. You know, I'm not going to sit here and say that all nine board members that are on this board need to go. The voter is the one that's supposed to say that, not me as an individual. I have my vote to say. I think that, you know, sometimes people get, if everybody's painting, sometimes the paint gets on you and you're not really part of the problem. So I think that's what's happening. We're looking at the board collectively when sometimes we need to look at the individuals and decide, you know, and that's what the voter does.
When I first ran, when I, when I first decided to run, one of the things that that I made sure of was that, am I going to be the best person to run for this position in my district? Now, I reached out to a lot of people that were previously running and I asked them for their support. And I said, if there's, if there's another person that I felt would do a better job than I would in this district, I would step down and support them. But as of yet, you know, and here I am. So obviously I haven't felt that way, but I know some of the other people feel they are. But that's personally. So I felt that I would, I would just step down if I didn't feel I was the best choice for this position. But I haven't stepped down, so I'm still strong on that.
And Mr. Sweeney, let me, because the question was asked, did every board member go? My main concern at this juncture is 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 seeking and solidifying the position of District One. That's, that's my main concern at this juncture. Now, this grand jury and all of the stuff, some things are perhaps are going to shake out that will cause others not to be involved in it. But my primary focus at this time is what voice and strength can I bring to District One?
Well, remember though, District One, we have to realize all three of us, just because we're making decisions for District One, it affects the entire district as a whole.
You're absolutely.
But our decision ultimately affects everyone in this district.
You're absolutely right. But, but, but.
And District One has been one of the most neglected districts in the county.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, because other people have stronger pull when it comes to the political bull behind the scenes. There's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that will never be spoken of in any type of public forum. You know, I can see it from where I'm working and there's things you just can talk about that are happening behind the scenes. That's why I want to get in. I want to get in on the inside and make some changes from seeing it from the inside.
Thank you very much. Just take a deep breath. I'm going to ask the candidates to please not interrupt each other and kindly wait till someone's at least through with a sentence, making a statement. Mr. Wiggins, a little more than a year ago this happened, was it right, was it the right course of action for Robert Runcie to resign as superintendent last year?
Was it the right decision? Ultimately, it was his decision. I don't know that it was necessarily the right decision.
Why is that?
I'm still trying to understand what, because a lot of the, a lot of the emphasis was placed on what happened up north in the northern part of the county. You're there, there have been significant improvements in the overall performance of the Broward County School System under his watch. Now, he made the personal decision, but I don't, I don't think that it was necessarily the right decision because there has been some improvements in the, in the Broward County School under his leadership.
Okay. Marie Martin, you've just heard Mr. Wiggins say he did not think it was necessarily the right move for Mr. Runcie to resign. What's your opinion?
He made the choice. He tried to stick with it for a little while, but he saw that the cards were against him. I think he did the right thing for himself and the district. It gave the district a chance to move on.
Mr. Velez, what's your opinion?
As, as a leader, as anyone in a position that he was in, ultimately, he's appointed to do a job. And that's to run a $4 billion a year business. You know, we have 30,000 employees in Broward County. It's, it's his job to oversee that and to make sure it's running that the way it needs to run. We've had problems. There's good things that he's done. He's brought some technological things and there's been a lot of bad things that's happened since his tenure. Any leader, for me, when it's, when it's time to step down, when things aren't going right, if you can't fix it, it's time to step aside and let somebody else try to fix the wrongs if you're not able to do it. So again, like, like my both, my opponent said, if, you know, it's his, it's his decision to step down. Some people might have felt he was pushed out, but 10 years is a long time to know whether you're doing good at a job or not. Yeah, some of the graduation, you know, rates are higher and there were some good things that he's did. And there were some, there were some things that weren't so good, you know, hence him being, you know, in the grand jury report and, you know, having the perjury brought across, you know, against him. It's just time for a change, you know, sometimes for a fresh change.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Velez, you said in your campaign literature and on your website, you're endorsed by the Broward Teachers Union, right? Ms. Martin, you are a Title I middle school teacher in the Broward system and have been for some time. Why would the Broward Teachers Union not endorse one of its own teacher, yourself?
I wish you could answer that for me. That is an interesting question. I'm a dues paying member for five years. I think it's, it's a political backstage that, again, there's backstage politics going on that I'm not privy to, I'm not a part of. And I asked to meet with Anna the week that, the week that I applied and filed, I, I wanted to meet with Anna.
And just for clarity, that's Anna Fusco, the.
Oh, President of the BTU. And she said, well, I don't know if I'm going to support you or not. And I said, hey, I just want you to get to know me. Let's just get to know each other, man to man, mano a mano, you know, just you and I somewhere. Let's have lunch together. She refused that. She played with me for a day on a Saturday through text, through emails back and forth, talking back and forth. We even got into discussion about where we would meet.
Uh, we even got into discussion about where we would meet. She didn't like the restaurant that I picked. I finally let her pick and that's where it ended. She, she picked the place, but the play, it never materialized. So, but I just wanted to get to know her and I wanted her to get to know me. I know that there was some personality conflict between her and my mother. My mother also being a charter member of the Federation and had been a BTU steward in the past. So it, it is confusing, it's confounding how that could happen.
Okay, Mr. Velez, before you got the BTU endorsement, did they interview you and screen you? Or did they just give you the endorsement cart lunch?
So since I had been advocating in front of the school board, um, while the schools were shut down from COVID, I had been advocating for the return of, uh, my kids to school during that period. Um, and in that time, I was able to meet Anna Fusco at one of the school board meetings. Um, we had different opinions on issues, but we, we finally met in person and we had conversations and there were things that we agreed to disagree on. But she can, she can tell you why she endorsed me. She, she knows that I'm a better candidate than whoever else is out there. Um, no offense to Mr. Wiggins or, or Ms. Martin. It's just I, I had been, um, going to school board meetings throughout the summer. I had been the constant parent that had been advocating for my kids and other kids to get back to school safely. She had been seeing me in action, you know, I had been involved. And just like she, she'll tell you, I haven't gone anywhere. I'm still around, you know? I decided to jump in this board, you know, to run for school board in District One. And, um, ultimately I had an interview with her and, and all the other members of BTU. And they grilled me and, um, we had conversations. And her biggest thing to me was to know that, um, when the time came and when I won, that to not ignore, you know, her call and to at least have conversations. And I told her that, you know, I would have conversations with the BTU and they would be constructive. Now, my decisions are going to be solely my decisions. I'm no one's puppet. Um, for the people that really know me, they know that I'm not anyone's puppet and that, um, I speak for myself. I'm a free thinker. So there's people out there that say, you know, Anna Fusco, I'm a mouthpiece for the BTU. That's not the case. I worked hard for this endorsement.
Very good. How many children do you have?
I have three boys. I have two that are currently in public school systems. I'm the only person that has two kids that are in the system.
You're the only candidate in this race with kids in the school system.
One, I'm the only parent that has two boys and go to Broward County Public Schools.
And where does your third child go to school?
No, he's 20, he's 25 now, he's out of school.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. So, um, all right, uh, very good. Dan, I'm going to reopen the floor to you, sir.
May, may I respond to that last question you had?
I'm sorry, my oversight. Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, a couple of things, uh, I'm going to start with the latter person. No, I don't have any kids currently in the public school system. You know, I'm 67 years old. Uh, but you know, I, my, my two daughters did graduate from public schools. So no, I don't have any kids, but there was a statement that was made that, um, Ms. Fusco knows who's the better candidate. And, 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 and I asked the question, how would she know that? If she didn't give, in, in fact, I reached out to Ms. Fusco. I never got any kind of returned phone calls. And, and in fact, that endorsement that was made prior to the qualifying period. So, so, so I, I consider myself not had, not, didn't get the opportunity to at least sit before the BTU so that they can make a consensus or decision relative to who would be the better candidate.
Well, just a quick follow-up question, Mr. Wiggins. And, and as you said, indicated, you come from a family of educators, your father, right? And so I'm, I don't know this, but you tell me whether, uh, other members of your family have been a member of the Broward Teachers Union or it's, it's predecessor organization?
Well, only one of my sisters, um, you know, Paulette, my late sister Paulette, I cannot answer if she was a member of the BTU. Uh, but she, uh, she was, uh, prior to her, her death, she was a second grade teacher at uh, Hollywood Hills Elementary here in the district, but I cannot answer that question, Steve.
Okay, uh, but, but my question is, is this, you've sort of hinted at it. Is it unfair for the Broward Teachers Union, uh, to endorse a candidate in any race without giving all candidates an equal opportunity to be heard?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Velez, your background is in construction, am I right? You have some expertise in the construction field. Uh, and I wanted to, you know, it's, it's, uh, the Broward County School District is a massive, uh, construction operation. I mean, as, as Ms. Martin said, it's a battleship. Everything they do is huge, everything, including building things if they, when they get around to building them. So how might your construction expertise help in the implementation of what's left down the road with the smart bond?
I've been, I've been handy my whole life. I, you know, I had my own business back in the early 2000, um, mid 2000s for six or seven years, right before, um, the recession started to hit. And that's when I took my current position for property management. Um, I've been with, uh, the Continental Valley Corporation Battle Company for 13 years now. Um, their portfolio is over a hundred commercial properties throughout the country. Um, it's my job, it's, there aren't as many buildings as the Broward County Public School Systems. You know, it's a little, probably a little more than, a little less than half or more. Um, but my job is to make sure that my buildings are not falling apart. We don't have episodes like Rickards Middle where the, the roofs are collapsing. Um, you know, Ms. Martin, is that one of those buildings that got condemned because it was the same construction? So, um, my, I think that my, you know, with my construction background is, is probably needed right now because one of the last facets in the smart bond project is the construction phase of getting these schools fixed up. You know, they grabbed all the low hanging fruit already. Um, you know, with the, with the music and the arts and some of the athletic, um, money. But, you know, now is the part where we have to get these schools, you know, fixed and, and properly maintained and be proactive. That, that's a problem with the district. They're always reactive. They wait till something falls, something leaks. Um, you know, my, my mindset is being proactive. My mindset is to save my boss money and make sure that all the people that are in my buildings are safe. After Surfside happened, you know, the, the thing, the hammer came down hard on me from all my properties. You know, we, I do my 40-year inspections, I'm involved with all the process. I understand what goes on in those processes. You know, none of my buildings have collapsed due to negligence.
Okay, thanks very much for that answer. Marie Martin, what about you, your background, especially your back, you've got a background both in journalism and in education? How that makes you the best qualified candidate in this race?
Well, when I was a, a journalist, um, one of my areas of expertise was really the budgeting and asking. Well, let me give you an example. Texer Cana College had purchased Sun Guard Education System. Um, when they bought it, they bought it as someone would buy a Cadillac without windshield wipers and tires. They didn't realize that there were a lot of add-ons to it. It almost bankrupted the college. So, uh, I was part, I mean, I was the main reporter that, that went to those meetings and oversaw those things, investigated, asked all the right questions, did the Freedom of Information Act request, all those kinds of things to bring light to, to, to let the public know what was going on, because of course everyone tries to hide something like that. So, um, I just have expertise, I think, at budgets, looking at budgets. Now this one, and I've said it before, I said it at the forum, this budget at, at this district is huge. It'd probably take 10 crackerjack accountants to get in there to understand the whole thing. But I think from my background education that, that I would help in that regard. As far as construction, no, I don't have any expertise in that. But I do know a little bit about how preventative maintenance should be done and how we're neglecting that. I agree with Rod in that regard, we're neglecting that part of our duties as a school district. We, a lot of us sat around and waited on the smart bond and didn't get those little things done and thought the smart bond was going to be the answer to the whole thing. No, there's preventative maintenance that had to be done. Um.
Let me ask Mr. Wiggins.
Well, let me start first with that smart bond, uh, you know, great idea in the beginning, uh, but it took a long time for them to implement it. Uh, the cost of, of, of materials and everything else went into it. And as I've visited, uh, several schools in the, the district, uh, the, what was approved under the spark, smart bond. The money from that, that was approved can no way do what was, 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 was asked for in the beginning. So the people are having to downsize on their request. Now, as it relates to my background, I was in banking, uh, for 23 years and a significant portion of that was on the credit side of the ledger. In fact, I was the manager of the credit department and what the credit department did, uh, during those times was to analyze financial statements of all of the companies who were coming to get large loans from the bank. It would have been Sunbank at that time. And I trained over 40 analysts to teach them how to read and understand and underwrite large corporate credit deals so that we can present them, uh, to the senior management team in order to make multi-million dollar, uh, decisions. So I know my way around, uh, the balance sheet, the income statement. And I understand how to begin to look at how we can, we can turn this battleship, if you will, to begin to focus on some of the things that we need to.
All right, and Mr. Wiggins, tell me, uh, tell me what, what's the current size of the Broward School District budget?
The, the, the Broward School District is a $4 billion, 3.74 billion operation.
3.74 billion. Rod Velez, is that figure accurate?
I'm not the accountant, but that was the number that I threw out when I said it earlier. $4 billion annual budget. That's another number. I mean, I could be off, uh, you know, a couple of million here or there.
And, and if I, if I can, Steve, that's what's reported, that's what's reported, uh, in, in the Broward Schools information.
Okay. In the few minutes we have remaining, I do want to, uh, give my colleague in the newsroom, Scott Travis, who covers this district so thoroughly and aggressively, give him a chance to ask a couple of questions. Scott, floor is yours if you want it, sir.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, so the first one, I, I need to bring up the elephant in the room, which I've talked to Rod about before, but I also want to hear from the other candidates, too. Obviously, Rod, it's no secret that you have a felony arrest in your background. Um, that would possibly make you not eligible to even be a, um, a, a volunteer in schools. What, uh, what, why do you think, uh, that is not disqualifying to be a school board member?
Uh, from what I understand, being, so the, the 2404 policy, um, for the volunteering, that, that's correct. As the policy is written right now, because of my charge that happened 27 years ago, um, it doesn't allow me to volunteer legally in, in my children's school. Um, or any school for that matter. Now, that's, that's the volunteer policy. Um, however, school board members are elected officials and aren't technically, you know, they're paid by the Broward County Public School System. They aren't technically employees because they are actually voted in by the constituents and the voters. Um, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but.
Yeah, well, I also, and I also wanted to find out from the other candidates, if you feel like, uh, his background makes him, um, unqualified or, or makes it, disqualifies him, you know, not necessarily from a legal point of view, from just from.
Can I just elaborate one thing real quick? Um, and I, and I know Mr. Wiggins is, is a pastor and, and I, I can, I'm not going to speak for him, but I know that, um, people of the cloth are, you know, very big on giving second chances to people. Um, but that's just, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Wiggins, you go first.
Yeah, we are, we are, we are big on giving second chances, giving repetitive, uh, you'll, uh, you'll benefits to folk. Now that, but that does not alleviate the fact that if it is a school policy and that there are some things in, in the policy as it relates to volunteers, uh, irrespective of what I do, you know, in, 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 as a minister, uh, the policy, uh, is the school board policy. Uh, and that is what should govern the day.
Does that make, does, do you think that makes them not, uh, eligible to be a school board member or?
That's, that's for the legal sources within the school board system. I, I, again, I that if the policy states it, um, then that's, that's what we have to live with. I'm, I'm, not me personally, but if that's the policy of the school district.
Ms. Martin?
I agree with Mr. Wiggins, uh, whatever the policy states. There are two policies, I think. There's one that governs employment, there's one that governs volunteerism. So, uh, but I don't know the details, but I, but I know like for me, when I became a teacher, I had to be fingerprinted and a background check had to be done for me to be in. I don't know what's done with a board member when they're sworn in.
That's not the same process though as a board member, that I know.
Well, Mr. Velez, I'd like to ask you a, a, a follow-up to what Mr. Travis brought up, and that is if you're elected to the school board, would you seek to change the policy to relax it so that someone who has a felony conviction could volunteer to school?
Look, it's on a per basis. I'm not, I'm, I don't want any special privilege because I have a charge, something that happened 27 years ago. We, it, it has to be on an individual basis. I'm, I'm a Boy Scout leader, okay? I, I teach boys how to be, to have good qualities in life, how to be leaders, how, how to be good human beings. Um, just like Pastor Wiggins, you know, teaches at his congregation, you know, with, with his community. Um, I feel it's going to be on an individual basis. You know, on, you, you can't put everybody in the same boat. It has to be individualized. Um, for me, it breaks my heart to know that I can't go and help out children because of a charge that happened 27 years ago. Now, if, if that was brought before a board, a special hearing, um, you know, just like the Boy Scouts allowed me with my charge and I was upfront. You know, they, all they cared about is that I was not a child molester and I had no previous issue with children. And they didn't care about that charge because I explained to them the story, just like I did everyone that asks. I have never hidden, I, I went to Mr. Travis over a year ago, just to let him know to be forthright. Well, and there's a lot of people that know, I'm not hiding anything. You know, I'm here to, to help our children first and foremost. And something that happened 27 years ago, which was something that I was defending myself in a life-threatening situation that anybody in that situation would have done if they were able to, would have done the same thing.
I'm going to ask a, a final question of, of you, uh, Marie Martin, and that is this. So I'm going to ask Marie Martin a question, Mr. Wiggins, we'll get to you in a second, sir.
No, I didn't say anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I just, I just thought, you know, we, we got some criticism because, uh, Steve, there wasn't, there wasn't questions about academics and this is a school board race. I really think we should probably ask them how they feel about, you know, COVID slide or something related academically.
I have as many, I have as much time as you guys need. I'll be here for another hour if you want. Or however long, so we can get this.
I'm on a lunch, I'm on a lunch break, but I, I, I have a few more minutes.
I got time.
Why don't we start with you then, Ms. Martin? Go ahead, Scott, reframe the question.
Yeah, no, I just, what, the, um, there's been terrible academic regression because of, of during the COVID slide with remote learning and Broward was one of the worst ones. As far as seeing academic declines, we also had a lot of students that weren't, you know, that didn't, um, go remotely. I mean, you can't change what was done in the past, but what, what do we need to do as a district to get the, catch these kids up and get them back on track?
Oh goodness, Scott, if we need an answer to that, we'd have it done, we would have had it done this year. Um, we're working hard, we're work, as teachers, we're working hard to, to turn it around. Um, with Governor DeSantis' changes to the standard, it kind of put everything back because we were working on the sunshine standards for a while. Now we're switching to the best, the FSA is no more. So we don't, we don't even know what to expect as far as what's going to come in the school year. I think what we decided as a school at Apollo was to get back to basics. So we're just trying to, um, meet, but you know, years ago it was teach, if the students in seventh grade teach, teach them seventh grade. Now, nowadays it's okay, they're coming in at third grade, scaffold them up from third grade up to seventh grade. We're, we're, so we're working hard. Scaffled them up from third grade up to seventh grade. We're we're so we're working hard to make those kind of things happen. A lot of work to do. Uh, it's going to take a partnership between us and the parents, though it's not all on the teacher. Students have to start doing homework when we ask them to get it done. Um, they have to come when we ask them, like, I'm I'm a psych coordinator for Twenty First Century, so I'm at school every day till six o'clock. Night. I'm helping students with recovery, credit recovery. Um, and so those students that are kind of have fallen behind may have to take the extra couple hours and come stay with us for a little bit to get caught up.
Mr. Velez, same question to you, sir.
Wow, how much time do we have? Um. So. It it's a it's a trickle. There's there's so many facets. Um. Our kids, we have, we have teachers that teach our kids. Um, so we have to get quality teachers back. We have teachers, we have nine sheets of this year alone of teachers that are resigning and that are retiring. We we have to be competitive in the market. We we are, our teachers are underpaid. We're the sixth largest in district in the nation. We we have to get back to where our teachers are appreciated. That they want to work. We know they don't do it for the money. We know that, but they they should make. What's fair, you know, they're not going to be able to retire and have million dollar houses, but. You know, we have to get back to the teaching. Once we get the teachers back in. Then we're able to get the parents involved even more. I'm an involved parent, but we have to, we have to get the communication out. You know, as District one school board member, I have to get all the information out to to the parents. To let them know what's going on in our district, so they can be involved. You know, when when we don't have that information passed out as parents, we can't get involved. So we have teacher, we have teacher pay, teacher involvement, getting better quality teachers. We have to get, just like Ms. Martin said, we have to get back to the basics. We have to focus on teaching the kids the curriculums that they need to learn, not teaching them around standardized testing. Um, the the teachers need to be allowed to teach again. All they are teaching are around standardized tests, which focus on. Getting those high grades in the schools to make sure that they pass, they get the approval from the county and everybody. Um.
Okay.
There there are so many things.
Mr. Wiggins, same question to you, sir.
The uh, the district, you 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 did uh, its best uh, you know, during the period of COVID. Um, you know, by providing computers um, and the likes, you know, to the uh, to the families. A couple of things, you know, that 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 missed the market. I don't know that it was the district's uh, problem. But you got you got uh, internet problems in many of the areas, particularly in some of our inner city areas. Uh, and when I look at District One, there were a lot of uh, new pockets that could have had a better job. Uh, of of providing uh, the 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 connectivity uh, to the internet. Um, and then you you have uh, in some of our households, uh, our parents. Uh, were not. Up to snuff, if you will, or adequate enough to help their kids. So I'm thinking. Uh, along that line is that we got to engage the community, our houses of worship. Other nonprofit organizations uh, that when our kids come from school. Uh, and particularly for some of those uh, who have. Uh, low income households, that we can bring them into those centers. Help them with their home homework and give them and really with with some of our basic reading. Uh, and then also be able to feed them. While they're there, uh, because many of these kids, uh, they can't, they can't learn on an empty stomach. So I'm thinking that. We got to have the entire community involved and to improve our technology. And teach our kids and their parents how to get it done together.
Okay. Um, I'm just mindful of the clock and mindful of the other demands on your time, so we're going to have to. Stop there uh, for the moment. Uh, I appreciate your participation, all three of you. Uh, Dan Sweeney or myself likely will follow up with one or more of you with follow-up questions.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys. It was nice to finally meet you.
Bye, thank you. Bye.
Take care.